Go ahead and get our meeting started. Winchester City Council Meeting Tuesday, March the 8th, 2016. And we'll start our meeting with prayer, and I'll ask Roger Caldwell to lead us in prayer.
Our most gracious heavenly fathers, we come to you tonight. We just come to glorify in your holy name and just lifting you up and just thanking you for all the blessings. Thank you for the beautiful weather we've had. We just thank you for the beautiful community that we live in. We thank you for the citizens and people who make the community what it is. We just pray that you'll be with all the businesses. We pray that you'll be with each person. We pray that you'll be with this council as they make the decisions that are best for the city. We just glorify you, we praise you, we ask for a safe trip home, and always give us safety and health. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
If everyone would stand please for the pledge, I'm going to ask Craven Indians to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Came in and Craven introduced himself, and he had this badge on that says "press", and I thought we were maybe getting someone from Fox News or something here.
Fox, please, Josh struck you as a Fox man?
I don't know. Or it could have been anyone, you know, but welcome. And Craven is new reporter, reporter, is that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, with Harold Cronk.
Harold Cronk. I'm happy to be in town, happy to be here, and thankful for all the hospitality and generous gestures.
Okay, good.
Look forward to meeting everybody in the village, because I haven't had a chance to already.
Okay, welcome. Okay, we'll move into public hearing. Public hearing, the court is now open, and in regard to ordinance 980, rezoning property Mount 75D, group D, partial 001.12, in the 900 block of South College Street to C2 Highway Service District, from the current multiple zoning classification of R2 and C2. Is there anyone in attendance tonight to speak for or against ordinance 980? Anyone in the audience tonight to speak for or against ordinance 980? No one coming forward, we will declare our public hearing closed. Move into addresses, presentations, and our requests. And this will be a request by the Winchester Downtown Program Corporation, Abby Pickett. You'll come forward.
Good evening. First, I want to thank the Winchester City Council and the Beer Board for supporting the Winchester Downtown Program and allowing us to host, and all of the 501(c)(3) nonprofit communities in the city to host two special events per year with beer. That allows us to do a little extra fundraising, so we're very thankful for that. So I've come before you tonight to request those two events to be held in downtown Winchester. The first event is the Third Annual Farm-to-Table Dinner, and you should have a letter that I submitted during the work session that lays out the information about this event, and it also shows a map where the event will be held. And the second event would be the First Annual Rising Sun Red Bud Summer Music Fest. We want to do this as a summer kickoff, an evening of live music and community spirit organized to celebrate the beautiful Rising Sun Red Buds in the beginning of summer, all in an effort to support and sustain a vibrant downtown. And I've also included a letter in your packet from the work session that goes into more detail about that event, and also a map of where we'd like to have the event. And I'd be happy to take any questions about those two events.
Abby, I know we're privy to that information about where they are, where they'll be. You might mention those locations, so it'll be disseminated in the press.
Sure. Okay, so the Winchester Farm-to-Table Dinner, this is the third year. It is a dinner, and the mission is to cultivate a healthy community by promoting locally grown, nutritious food through an intimate dining experience filled with warm-made food prepared by an award-winning local chef and regionally sourced beverages. This event is held in the parking lot of Fernando Santistamin, which is between North Jefferson Street and North High Street. It is a, we sell 100 tickets, and it's a dinner that comes with wine and beer. We provide entertainment, and we also have a select few vendors that have local sustainable products. So the second event, and the date for the Farm-to-Table, I'm sorry, would be August the 6th, and that is from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And then the First Annual Rising Sun Red Bud Music Fest would be June the 4th. And that would be, the timeline that we've proposed for this event would be 5:00 to 9:00. We proposed that the gates would open at 5:00 p.m., and that's when we would like to ask for the food, the beer, and merchandise sales from the bands, three bands, to begin. 7:00 p.m. the bands would start, and this is a tentative schedule. We would end the beer sales if it would be approved at 9:00 p.m., and then at 10:00 p.m. the event would end. We have, for this location, for this event, we would like to host it on North College Street beside the Oldham, the block between First Avenue Northeast and Second Avenue Northeast. We would respectfully request to have that area of North College Street closed that evening. And then we would request to use the city amphitheater for the bands that is on North College Street. And then for the beer for this event, we would like to hold it on a piece of private property. It would be an enclosed beer garden. We've received a letter of permission to have the beer garden on the parking lot that is adjacent to North College Street. It is behind Tim Priest Building, Swapper Peters Priest and Hall. And that would be an enclosed beer garden. People cannot leave that area without, with alcohol. So that's the basics, the basic layout of those two events that I'm asking permission to have in downtown Winchester.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council, you've heard the request from Abby in regard to the two programs that she would like to recommend or ask for approval from the council. What would be the will of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Spencer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Alexander. Any discussion?
Question. Sure. Abby, are you working in projection with our police chief Dennis Young and fire chief Greeson?
Yes, for both the events, we, we work with, for sure, Chief Young, I mean, Chief Gary Greeson. He approves the space and lets us know how many we can have in the area. And then also, we'll work with Chief Young however necessary. We've actually kind of worked, kind of started communication with the Franklin County Provision Coalition to work with them in any way possible. They have some funds maybe to increase the patrol on those evenings, just, you know, for their peace of mind and for some public safety concerns, you know, there was to be any. And then we considered, you know, I know on New Year's Eve and stuff, the sheriff's department offers a sober ride. We considered asking them if we could make that a possibility that evening. We're priced, for the Farm-to-Table Dinner, it's, it's spread out and it's ticketed, the tickets are, you know, we only sell so many tickets, and we price it at $75. And then for the Rising Sun Red Bud Festival, we want to make sure to price the beer if we're able to do this at a point where, to make sure that people wouldn't, not price it so low people could, you know, want to drink a lot. But we want to keep, we want to have local craft beer, try to showcase as much local as we can, and price it at a point where we're able to make money to cover some of our costs for the event, but also to hinder people from drinking too much.
Okay, okay. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those no, motion carries. Thank you, Abby.
Thank you very much for your time.
We'll move into our unfinished business. Item A is approval of minutes of the February 9th, 2016, regular council meeting. What would be the will of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Womack. Second by Councilwoman Bates. Discussion. All those in favor, aye. Those no, minutes stand approved. Item B is approval of minutes of the February 18th, 2016, special call meeting. What would be the will of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Spencer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Alexander. Discussion. All those in favor, aye. Those no, minutes stand approved. Item B is the third and final reading of ordinance 980, rezoning property Mount 75D, group D, partial 001.12, in the 900 block of South College Street to C2 Highway Service District, from the current categories of R2 and C2. What would be the will of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Womack.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spencer. Discussion. This will be a roll call, Ms. Roden.
Councilwoman Alexander. Councilwoman Bates. Councilman Spencer.
Aye.
Councilman Womack.
Motion carries. That concludes our unfinished business. We'll move into new business with airport leases, or lease. Zachary Colescott.
Good evening. After a little bit of back and forth, we were finally able to hammer out a lease agreement with Bird Aviation, which is the aviation division of Baxter Enterprises High Tech. Hopefully, I think everybody's been supplied with copy. It is a 15-phase document currently, but the basics of the lease are, actually, let me pull me back up. You may or may not know that we had been approached in an awfully distant past by Robert Schulte with ITech and Baxter. He informed us that their company was going to be purchasing a different aircraft than what they had previously. This aircraft was a little bit larger than what they had previously, and we could not accommodate their request for hangar space with the current facilities that we had at the time. Through some goodwill on the part of T-Dot Aeronautics, we were able to obtain a grant from them to construct a new storage hangar out at the airport. It is an 80 by 80 storage hangar with a 70-foot clear span opening that is 20 feet tall on the door, so we can put some pretty decent-sized aircraft in this hangar. Because the driving force behind this building, this hangar, was, of course, Schulte's new aircraft, so we wanted to be able to work with them to put their aircraft in that hangar. They want, they desired a guaranteed space in this hangar for when they visit, so we were able to work with them to hammer out this lease. The basics of this lease are really not that complicated. As I said, they wanted a guaranteed spot for their aircraft, so for that, we came to an agreement of $10,000 per year to store that aircraft for no more than, I think it's 50 nights a year, and that works out to be $833.33 or 34 cents per month, or $200 per night to store the aircraft, which is pretty darn good. The lease will be for an initial 10-year period, but not to be less than seven years, so they do have the option to terminate the lease before that 10-year period is up, but they have to pay out at least seven years of the lease. On the back end, there is a renewal option of an additional 10 years, at which time the rate that we currently be charging can be reviewed. The guaranteed spot that we're going to be offering them is no, does not include exclusive use of the hangar. The hangar is of such a size that their aircraft only takes up about two-thirds of the space in the hangar while it's inside, which leaves plenty of room for other smaller aircraft to be stored concurrently. During the times when that aircraft is not here, though, we will utilize the building to hang or transit aircraft of varying sizes, and we've already come up with nightly rates based on the size of aircraft that have gone there that have been approved in our effect at this time. So we would ask that you would approve the lease as written, and the only change that we would make is that after we've talked about it, we would include one additional signatory page that would either be mayor or the city administrator to sign off on.
Okay, council, you've heard the request from Zachary in regard to the lease. What would be the will of the council?
Motion to approve the lease.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Alexander. Second by Councilman Womack. Discussion.
Discussion. Zachary, are our hangars at the airport, are they identified by, are the buildings and hangars identified by numbers or signage or letters? And I'm thinking if in case we had like a medical emergency out there, would our medical people be able to know?
A little bit of both. Previously, prior to the construction of the recent set of T-hangers that we had out there, the buildings that we had didn't really keep pace with a 911 emergency address, for whatever reason. I don't know the reason behind that. Most of the buildings did have an address. Other buildings were either identified by certain terminology or a number, just an individual unit number that had been assigned to it. As we started to move forward with new construction, the new set of T-hangers was assigned its own address. This storage hangar was assigned its own address. I only received that address, I believe it was last week, so it didn't have time to make it into this lease. That can be adjusted, that's not a big deal. But yes, the buildings out there are identified now by a 911 emergency address on it.
Are they posted on the building, or when you say?
Yeah, the T-hangers, the new T-hangers have them. The storage hangar is getting them now that I have the number. Our terminal building, or our office building, it has them. The old office building has it, and then I believe the only other building, I take it back, the temporary facility for Medtrans has been assigned a temporary emergency address, and then one of Carl Sprague's hangars has a 911 address, but I don't know that it's displayed on the building anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Probably a good idea to display that, and it'd probably be a good idea to put that inside of this lease.
We can certainly make that change. Like I said, at the point in time when this was agreed upon between the two parties, we hadn't been assigned the address yet, but Pat got back with me, I think, on Thursday of last week, and was able to provide it for us.
I want to comment, in that regard, I would think as we go forward with any leases that the lease should identify what building that airplane's in. So I think it'd be good to have those buildings.
For example, the T-hangers leases, or the ground leases, not the ground leases, I'm sorry, the month-to-month leases that we have, they are identified on the lease not by the 911 address, but by the unit number. Each individual unit has its own assigned number.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye. Those no, motion carries.
Thank you, and I'll get that changed made, and once we are able to connect back with Mr. Schulte and get the lease signed, we'll of course involve you folks as well.
Okay, thanks Zach, long time coming.
Thank you.
Stay in there. Okay, next item is bids for mowing contract. Ms. Roden.
You have in your packet, we received two bids. First one from Yard Works, $14,040. Second one, Caldwell Loan and Landscaping, $22,500. It would be mine and Corporate Works Director's recommendation that we take Yard Works.
Okay, council, you've heard the request from Ms. Roden in regard to recommendation of Yard Works at the low bid of $14,040. What would be the will of the council?
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation, the Yard Works were $14,040.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Bates. First by Councilman Spencer. Any discussion? There'll be none. All those in favor, aye. Those no, motion carries. Item C, change order request number two for First Avenue Sidewalk Project, number 114983.
You also have in your packet a change order that was, actually was compiled by our engineer. We also have an engineer staff member that's on site doing a project of this size at all times. There have been multiple change orders, one that has come before the council in the past. When we started having some very small ones, I asked them, could they compile them all into one, so we could just bring it one time? So in front of you, you will see one, there's eight separate change orders compiled into one for a current change order of $47,887.50. This money is budgeted in the grant in, under contingency, because we know when we do a project of this scope, there will be things that we are unaware of until we start the project, so we would just ask that, I'd be giving permission to sign that.
Okay, council, you've heard the request from Ms. Roden in regard to the change order. What would be the will of the council?
Motion that she can sign off.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilwoman Alexander.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spencer. All those in favor, aye. Those no, motion carries. Oh, how's the project coming? I mean, is it coming along like it should?
It's coming along. We're getting, today, we're forming and putting in curbing on the north side of City Hall, and tomorrow, weather permitting, which I believe it will, there will be pouring concrete for the brick section of where the, and once the, that section is four, then they can go the rest, so we're making some noticeable progress.
Good. Item D, post-implementation review of credit card procedure. Martha Carroll, or processing, excuse me.
As you all received in your packets, and we just discussed at the work session, we did a pre-implementation for credit card processing and submitted that to the state about a year ago at this time. And now the state requires that after a period of a year to 18 months, that we do a post-implementation review, and then submit that to the state. So that has to be just brought before the council, so you're aware of it, and that will complete that process with the state, so that they're aware of our credit card processing and how that's gone in the first year.
Okay, council, you've heard the request from Martha Carroll. What would be the will of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Spencer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Bates. Discussion. Is this the document that you actually sent to the state?
That's the document, yes.
Okay, all those in favor, aye. Those no, motion carries. Thank you, Martha Carroll. IT policy, Ms. Roden.
You have in your packet a recommended information security policy. Carl Marshall, which is our IT guru, recommended this policy. It includes the utility policy, which all Winchester information runs through servers that he handles. So I would ask that we could add this to our personnel manual, it's a new policy.
Okay. Council, you've heard the request from Ms. Roden in regard to the IT policy. What's the will of the council?
Mayor, I approve for the policy, the IT policy.
Motion to approve by Councilman Spencer.
Second.
Second by Councilman Womack. All those in favor, aye. Those no, motion carries. Requested to hire employee, Ms. Roden.
Chief Young is out sick today, so he asked that I take this item on the agenda, and he did make mention of this at our work session last week. He has recently hired a new person, has formerly been with us in the past, but we were discussing actually letting him hire an additional person, a person, this person is not currently in our budget, and we had discussed starting that in July, doing it in the budget process. But when reviewing the budget and seeing that he has been short somewhat most of the year in different areas, that we would be able to go ahead if the council, okay, to have that extra person, we could manage to add two to three months of a salary in there. He does not have a person right at the moment that he's thinking about, but he would like permission to look.
Okay, council, you've heard the request from Ms. Roden in regard, in regard to request to hire a new employee in the police department. What would be the will of the council?
Motion to approve.
We all want that.
All right, motion to approve by Councilwoman Alexander.
Second.
Second by Councilman Womack. Discussion. All those in favor, aye. Those no, motion carries. Item G, first reading of ordinance 981, absentee voting.
I'm not going to read the entire ordinance, but I would like to mention that this ordinance actually is already in effect, has been effective since 2014, but we were made aware of some wording errors that M-TAS recommended that we clarify. So this ordinance will correct the wording to the original ordinance 965. So I'd like to read the section that will be changed. Title 20, miscellaneous, chapter six, section 20-501. All persons residing outside the corporate limits of the city of Winchester who own real property within the corporate limits of the city of Winchester, and who are entitled to vote in the city of Winchester municipal elections pursuant to the Winchester City Charter, Article 2, Section 2, and other general law requirements, shall cast their ballot in the city of Winchester municipal elections by absentee, by mail ballots. This was done in 2014 at the request of the election commission, but it was written as though it would require a charter change, and it does not require a charter change, so there were a few words that were tweaked to make it correct. So we're just asking to change the number and update an amendment to current ordinance.
Okay. Council, you've heard the request from Ms. Roden in regard to ordinance 981, which I think it just gets us better in compliance.
Yes, it does.
In cleaning the ordinance up. What would be the will of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Spencer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Bates. This will be a roll call. Excuse me, do we have any discussion, pardon? Okay, this will be a roll call, Ms. Roden.
Councilwoman Alexander. Councilwoman Bates. Councilman Spencer. Councilman Womack.
Okay, motion carries. Item H, first reading of ordinance 982, adopting international codes for upgrading standards for building utilities, or utility codes, pools, etc. Is Pat going to address this, or?
He can answer any question. This ordinance actually is upgrading the city of Winchester to the 2012 building codes. We have regulations with the state that we have to stay within so many years, I believe that's seven, and we're operating at 2006 now, so he has reviewed and made the decision that it would be best for us to offer it to 2012. There are some exclusions, and also for the media, we do have copies of all these ordinances available for you.
Okay. Council, you've heard the request from Pat, Pat's recommendation in regard to adopt Council, you've heard the request from Pat, Pat's recommendation in regard to adopting the international codes. What would be the will of the council?
Move to approve.
Motion from Council, Councilman Womack.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spencer. Discussion. This will be a roll call.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Spencer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Womack.
Motion carries. Item I is first reading of ordinance 983, rezoning Twin Creeks Phase One from R1 to R3A. Speaking to that or?
It's pretty self-explanatory. It, it's basically just rezoning it from the R3A to the R1 to make it in compliance with what they're wanting to do with the property. There's also another, the following ordinance will change it one section to C2.
Okay. Okay, council, you've heard the request in regard to ordinance 983, rezoning Twin Creeks Phase One from R1 to R3A. What would be the will of the council?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Alexander.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spencer. Discussion. This will be a roll call.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Spencer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Womack.
Okay, motion carries. Item J, first reading of ordinance 984, rezoning two tracks along Lynchburg Highway from R1 to C2.
I would like to note that on the third page of the ordinance, there is a map clarifying where that piece of property is. It's actually, I believe that would be to the north of where the current law cabin is. And they're wanting that for future commercial development.
Okay. Okay, council, you've heard the request to ordinance 984, rezoning two tracks along Lynchburg Highway from R1 to C2. What's the will of the council?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Spencer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Womack. Discussion. This will be a roll call.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Spencer.
Aye.
Councilman Womack.
Motion carries. Okay, that, I believe, concludes our business for this evening. We'll move into communications. I will go to council, Councilwoman Alexander, the communications that you brought to.
Well, I do know this past Saturday was the play-in. It was a little chilly, but they had a very good breakfast and high-test coffee. Already by 7:15, there were probably twenty, twenty-five planes coming in. It's quite interesting, if you've never attended, the first Saturday of each month at 7:00 a.m. is the play-in. The breakfast is seven dollars, all depending on the food.
Is that the only place you can get high-test coffee?
Other than my house, where I'm assigned.
Okay. Councilwoman Bates?
I just want to mention that the Beer Board did approve the new owner, Mr. Glazer, for beer prevent for the John Teas, so maybe they'll be open more.
Okay. You're good. Councilman Spencer?
I've no report, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Womack?
No report?
Nothing?
Well, everybody I think found out to shop at home first. Just made you money here, bro. Go to kitchen, tell the home, spend any money.
I haven't made any money yet. I'll spend it for your suggestions.
I'll fix it where you make some money.
Okay. All right, City Administrator, Ms. Roden?
I have a somewhat last-minute request of the council this afternoon. Myself and Special Project Coordinator, Yvonne Stewart, met with Rural Development, and we were made aware of a possible Rural Development Grant that may help us with something we've been looking into. Because we only found out about that this afternoon, the deadline for this particular grant is next Tuesday, and we would need to put one talk with the council and also prepare a resolution, so I would respectfully request a special call meeting.
Okay. And what would be your recommendation for special call meeting?
As long as we have it before 4:30 next Tuesday.
Okay.
That will give us time to get the, get in under deadline.
What, what does it do if we do Tuesday the 22nd? I mean, that, is that two?
No, the deadline is the 15th.
It's the 15th.
Oh, I'm sorry, the fif, excuse me, the 15th. The deadline is the 15th, okay.
But it can be done on that day. There's no problem with that. I just need a signature before 4:30. Now it's Friday morning.
Next week, the Burke will make us hospital this week.
Okay.
But we only have, what, Monday next week?
Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday, okay. Tuesday morning would be better for me, unless it could be, maybe accurate.
Tuesday morning, okay. Fifteen, that okay with everyone? Tuesday morning?
Eight o'clock.
Eight, eight o'clock work?
No, I was trying to let them know.
Okay. Okay, so on Tuesday morning at eight o'clock, we'll have a special call meeting. Okay. And you'll make everybody aware of that?
Yes, I will.
And remind the council?
I will.
Okay, good. Are you going to put that on our calendar?
I will.
Okay, because that, that helps, helps me a lot if you do that.
That's all I have.
Okay. I, I have, and I guess it's more of just a communication to the, to the press that for the next three months, we are going to be having our council meetings at five o'clock instead of six. And our work sessions at eight o'clock instead of what we normally try to do at, at seven. So for three months, beginning next month, council meeting at five, work sessions at I guess I'd just like to comment that I appreciate everybody's patience, the public's patience in regard to the construction that's going on downtown, and as everyone has now become aware of, the resurfacing of the, of the bridge coming up on the square, so just be patient. In a, in a few weeks or a few months, these projects will be behind us and life will get back to normal, I hope. But we've, we've done an awful lot of work on the, around the square, and I think everyone is very pleased and excited about what has transpired on the square, and we get a lot of comments from people outside of our community, visiting and passing through on what a beautiful square we have, and so we've got a lot to be thankful for, and that too required patience and a lot of it. And so I would just ask to, everyone to continue to be patient with us. That's all that I have. Any department heads have any communications or anything that they would make comment? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Bates. Second by Councilman Spencer. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Stand adjourned. Thank you.